I'd like to make it 9:10 am, thank you for your attendance. Does everyone got a copy of the updated tender? We've got three items on there. If we have no other business, we'll move on to item 5.1. Subject added, proposed by Mayor Tyson Gold to amend resolution SM02.2020/29 tender, 219 evaluation report, big up with observation tower and tree walk. And I would like to move... Yeah, 9:10. I would like to move that council... Okay, for completeness, I'm going to read. The original resolution meeting date was special meeting on 21st of February 2020. The original resolution number was SM/02.2020/29. Proposed it to be made at the meeting date, special meeting on the 20th of May 2020. Repeal or amendment of resolution. Original resolution number is SM/02.2020/29. And the original resolution was that number one select Jay Hutchinson, PTYLGD, as the preferred tender. Two, authorise the chief executive officer or delegate to progress negotiations. And accept the tender if the final terms are acceptable to both parties. And subject to approval of the council's loan application. Further, that the negotiations seek to maximise the local content and reduce the overall cost of the project. The proposed amendment, that council select Jay Hutchinson, PTYLGD, as a preferred tender. Two, authorise the chief executive officer or delegate to progress negotiations. And what has been crossed out in red is "and accept the tender if the final terms are acceptable to both parties" and "subject to approval of council's loan application". So that's been crossed out. And then the rest of it is "further, that the negotiations seek to maximise the local content" and "reduce the overall cost of the project." Now, moving on to the recommended amended resolution. That council select Jay Hutchinson, PTYLGD, as the third tenderer. Authorise the chief executive officer or delegate to progress negotiations. Further, that the negotiations seek to maximise the local content and reduce the overall cost of the project. And three, further, consider whether or not to award the tender at the earliest possible meeting. Okay, so I'm moving that, and is there a second for that motion? Counselor McMullin. And would anyone wish... Okay, and I might also just write also the background. The mayor wrote to the chief executive officer on the 14th of May 2020 to request that above-mentioned resolution be amended or partly rescinded to allow the new council the opportunity to consider the future of the big rig project at a meeting of the 27th of May 2020. So I'll speak to the motion. This is, to make it very clear, this isn't about not doing the big rig, with the bigger big rig and tree walk. This is about allowing the new elected council to make the final decision. I also believe that this is a very healthy principle of the nine councillors making the decision with all of the information. And as this council will have to deal with taking on debt and so forth, this council, I believe, needs to make the decision. So by doing this recommended amendment resolution or rescind resolution, it's not about changing anything except for this council will have to make the final decision. And I would hope that on the meeting of the 27th of May, that we will have all of the information and the council will make the decision. So this is not affecting the project except for allowing this council to make the decision. Would anyone like to speak against the motion? Would anyone like to speak at all about either one? Counselor...
Well, Counselor Taylor had her hand up before me.
Oh, I didn't see that. Counselor Taylor?
I would just... I was just out the other day, just trying to get a feel of what the people thought because I hadn't really heard much about it, but nobody knows anything about it. Like, I really feel we have to ask, put it out there on Facebook or in something to get some feedback from some of the community because nobody knows about it. And the only time they actually tweet is if you say a zip line. And then they say, "Oh yeah, I did hear something about something." So if we have to borrow, I would like to make sure that it's because the community want this project. I'm not for or against it, I honestly don't have an opinion on it yet. I would like to know what the Roma community want. I'm like, does Mitchell know about it, you know, does India know about it, does Saratna about it? Like, who knows about? Apart from the Visit Roma and Roma farmers and, you know, that group? Has it been put out there for open discussion? Somebody said something, there was some sort of community thing in 2018. When now we're into 2020, so I would really, I need some feedback somehow on this project.
Okay, Counselor O'Neill?
Given that it's coming back in a week, I've got a fair bit to say about this project, but I'll reserve some of those comments until then. But I will be voting against the rescission motion, given that this has been... The Big Rig has been a project that each term of this Maranoa Regional Council has been looking at. Yep, there's been some tweaks as to what an investment should be down there. But since before I was on council, Maranoa Regional Councils have identified that we have a significant asset, tourism asset, in our region, and that is the Big Rig. And at that time, it was 12 years down the track since it was built. We're now at some nearly 20 years since that original investment was made on the Big Rig. And it needs the investment if we are going to continue to have it as a drawcard for people to stop into our region. Stop into our region an extra night, whether that's in Roma or any other community that makes up the Maranoa. We need to ensure that we are attracting that tourism clientele into our region. And so I think a power of work has occurred leading up to this point. All I can see is that we are delaying signing off on a much-needed project for our region. Extensive due diligence was done on this project in the previous term. And given that I was part of that term, I hardly support the project. And I think this is a slippery slope to not doing this project and therefore I will not be supporting the rescission motion today.
Okay, Counselor Burke?
Oh, I know, but I do. One thing, like I'm a bit like Wendy, the public deception thing and not knowing. And like I was part of the action group and it's never been really bandied around with this whole tourism starts here and then sending out to all regional areas. I don't think that's happened as much as I'd like it. And the information isn't out there that we know about it. And I'm not saying either way, but one thing is just that if people want to, you know... The thing I don't want to lose is the grant money, like if they want to see that money get lost, but also we don't want to get in a lot of debt either. So there's a lot of information that we see need to know and I don't know if it's going to take a week or more, but I'm all for tourism, but I want every area to know what's going on because if this is going to be the thing that brings everyone to town and then send them to Strath, India and wherever, I want to make sure that all the things are ticked and it's us that are signing off on it. We want to know all the information and stuff.
Okay, well, if you just go around the table, everyone have a go.
I'm also in favour of tourism. I think I've done a lot of touristy things in my time and I believe there's a great benefit. My own concern is the fact that we are signing off on a big project with extending the council's debt to a large degree. And I believe that Counselor O'Neill was going to write to see whether or not even the second state government grant had been approved because I think it's foolhardy to be signing off on something on the assumption that something's coming through until you get concrete confirmation that you've received the money. We are looking at, I think there's a lot of benefit in waiting and delaying until you get the final, all the ducks in a row, all the confirmation because I think it's very, if we sign off like now, it's very premature when we may or may not be securing that money. And I'm just a big believer that if you're going to agree with something, you've got to make sure that you've got confirmation of the money that you're anticipating because until you get the confirmation, it's only just anticipation.
So may I just point out clearly that the council will be writing to the minister, not me?
Oh, so you write, sorry.
I read the resolution, but yes, it's council that'll write.
Well, it still stands, yeah.
Just an update to council team, just from that meeting last week. Cindy Melville did contact funding body.
Okay, so we'll go with Counselor McMullin and then Counselor...
I'm a bit, sorry, thank you. I'm a bit torn between it. I, everyone, I've had nearly all over the head. Quite a few phone calls, emails, and that in the last few days. I've had a few people agreeing, backing up probably what Counselor O'Neill said, but they, it's probably too late, they are concerned about the tree walk, the tower and the tree walk going ahead. Going in first, ahead of refurbishing the existing building. One lady, I didn't get to talk, she left me some messages this morning. Late last night, I read this morning, the toilets and all that type of thing. And I know there is money down the track to do that. So we're looking for money down the track to do all that.
Staged approach.
Staged approach, but some people are saying that maybe too late, we've taken the... The back of the wrong end of the...
Horse before the car.
Yeah, horse before the car, car before the horse, yeah.
Counselor Laverick?
I just think that if we're going to borrow, I think it's about 3.7, is it? And with Covid, the next couple of years, I think we just need to hold our horses and just take it slow. You know, I'm all for tourism too. If we're going to borrow that sort of money, we need to know what's going on because we need to help this community before, you know, borrowing 3.7, it's a lot of money. And, you know, it's a lot of money to borrow. And with Covid and everything else, I just think we could leave it there for a while, there's no big hurry. It's all there, and go from there.
Okay, Counselor Anko?
Yeah, look, thanks, Mr Mayor, for being considered of the new councillors and this council to make the decisions that we're going to have to be responsible for. With this one, my personal opinion is the decision has already been made. There's been too much money, time and resources invested in this project for us to then be able to make the decision. There has been support by the state funding with the first grant. And I just think that we, there's been just too much invested. This decision was made prior to us. I think our job as a council is to make it work, to get behind the community, to get behind each of our communities and sell it and make it work. And always welcome for more information and more briefings and who's doing what within the tender. But the decision for, the decision for this council to change the previous council's decision, I believe that times has changed.
Okay, so everyone has had an opportunity to speak. All right, please go ahead.
Yeah, I'm the same, all the tourism looking after the Maranoa region. Doesn't sit sort of well to me, can't be expected to take on board everything until we sort of motherfucks are in. As Counselor O'Neill said, this will be going on for some time and we're expected as councillors to, you know, make a decision on something that went on for so long. I mean, if it's hindsight, we'd be more informed. Same, Counsel Laverick there, you know, I just think COVID-19, I think it's probably committing ourselves to attending a project, isn't it, for a master plan? And, yeah, I think there's certain things there that maybe we shouldn't. We're just doing a couple of stages, maybe not commit to the whole lot, maybe we can even tweak that a bit. And sort of, I mean, there's certain costs involved in a project that maybe we can tweak or do something with. No mistake of demolition costs and there's all sorts of things in those, in the end. A little bit that I'm really aware about, but I just don't think we're going to make much of it. But, you know, in the next, of course today, the 20th, so the next week, we've got to make, we've got to come to grips with it ourselves. You know, we've got to come to grips with what we know, what's at our disposal. You know, will we get someone to give us another briefing about it? And we've spoken with the guys the other day. Maybe we're just getting their story. So anyway, I haven't really made a decision on it, but I'll be looking out fairly closely, anyone?
Uh, Brooke, do you have something you'd like to say?
Yes, obviously we contacted funding bodies to find out whether we could have an announcement. Know that they're vice versa visiting minister, so they're unsure when we can have an announcement. And they're vice versa that this council actually wants to then keep in place. Because we did contact them, but hey, they might be able to give us the date, but being a minister, it's not. We'll go ahead with that.
Okay, Counsel McMullin?
Mayor, Mr Bidman, the, what does the resolution, I know it's a rescission resolution you're proposing. The recommended amended resolution, would that be in the same?
So it's on that page three?
Yes.
That's what it would be, is that correct, see? As far as that could sound included? Is that all? Get it? So the only difference moving forward, the recommended amended resolution will be on page three and you can see the red has been taken out of it.
But, Mr Mayor, sorry, on page three I'm talking about, that recommended, that's different. Further, consider whether or not to award the tender at the earliest possible meeting. I guess what I'm trying to say, if the rescission notice gets up to date, does this just automatically go to the next meeting, doesn't it? The new recommended resolution, have we got that? That's when we would debate it then, or?
Well, at the earliest possible meeting, so it does say the 27th.
It does in your resolution. Oh, sorry, it does in your background.
Um, it'd be till we get all the information, I suppose.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get.
Just to clarify, the council's, the meeting was moving, you know, like I was saying, it's where that that this has been done as the first step, just to make sure that the decision rests with the new council, which was the intent of the changes. But, so that's why it's amended in such a way to remove that that it could be approved without it coming to the council. So that bit has been removed. But just for the sake of clarity, point three was added to communicate that the decision about whether or not to award the tender is a separate step that needs to be undertaken. It probably is worth mentioning, Mr Mayor, that the original motion was subject to approval of council's loan application. So whilst the mayor initially thought the 27th, I did foreshadow that some things are out of our hands and we need to await that information. But we can probably inform council, so...
That's going to be my next question, how we're going with that line approval, I suppose.
We're consistently following the...
Sorry, but whatever, nothing, it's not approved yet, yeah, with the line.
So whilst every endeavour will be made at the earliest possible meeting, we couldn't guarantee the 27th only because that matter is out of our hands.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Then basically, at this point in time, the approval is not true.
So we wouldn't have been able to make a decision on that, anyway?
Well, yes, so part of the old motion was that once the loan was approved, then we could just go ahead.
Because the decision had been made.
Yeah, but still the loan hasn't been approved.
No, it's true. The loan was approved.
So it's all hypothetical, it might have to let's.
Yeah, so that, and council, as you would know, would never make a decision unless it had the money. So that's all right. But this really, and that's why I was happy with point three in the end, which is at the earliest possible meeting, because if we're not putting a date in, because it might not be able to happen on the 27th. Because we're waiting for an approval to come through and it's up to the stakeholder when that happens.
Can I just, one more thing, Mr Mayor? That's what I mean, like we, and I know this is going to be part of the job, these emails we seem to be getting, they're sort of preempting our decisions and a lot of demands when we haven't, one, haven't got all the information. And two, the relevant parties haven't signed off on things. So we, hands are a bit tied in that respect. And just another, in regards to grants, I spoke to an ex-councillor today about a couple of different things. He rang me on the way down and he said that there's a new, the premiers put out a $100 million grants for the resource area, so we fall under that. Is that something that we can onboard with straight away?
Oh, well, any...
Something like that would come under that, wouldn't it?
Any grants that the state or federal government comes up with, we get notified and you will get notified as councillors.
But some, if it's targeted at the resource area, and that's the start of the resource area...
Yeah, you know, we're in that area, so, yeah. But we have to wait till we get told potentially about it and all of that.
And it's probably a tough thing to...
Mr Mayor, just two things, I just want to point out that whilst Counsel Laverick said that, you know, take things slowly, slowly, and I agree, you don't want to rush into anything. But I just want to point out that there is deadlines associated with grant money. And so, like, grant money has to be expended by a certain date and so...
When is that?
I think it's December.
Next year, no.
December, this year was one month.
Final list, June, this project, yeah.
So there is sort of dates that we're doing to...
June, this year, no, next year. Is the very final, fine?
Yeah, we've got 11, 13 months.
But I think that, like, I know, and we're getting, as a new councillor, but wasn't it handed in January this year? Like, the decision wasn't, so there was a month or two delay of the decision then. So it's not only us that have been airing on the side of caution, or us councillors must have done the same too because January had come out, but...
What, I'm just wondering, Counsel, what more information do you need? Yeah, like what more information do we need? I think it's all well to sit around this table and say we would like more information. Can we be specific about what information we need so people can get that information for us?
Well, in 2018, what sort of information was gathered from the community then? The three councillors that were already here, like, what was provided so that you knew the Roma community wanted this project?
Because last week, all we heard was Charlie just going for it. And we virtually knew nothing, hardly about it, until Charlie pushed all these issues. There's a lot of, you know, like, it seems all one way.
I'm not surprised, Counsel Laverick, that it's the first you've heard about it because you're new on the council.
Yeah.
But he did, he did reach out to all the candidates, understand, before the election. And maybe not everyone went to his briefing centre.
No, George, I meant to, Mr.
But, I mean, you saw a passionate advocate who's leading his particular organisation, which is the big body for tourism out of Roma. You saw Commerce Roma president sitting with him, you know, handing gloves, supporting this project. There is support out there for, can I say, in the eight years that I've been on council, I have not received as much correspondence, phone calls, emails on any issue other than this one. And I'm getting, I don't know about everyone else, but I'm getting correspondence and phone calls outside of Roma from people that are in the tourism space that are dead keen to see this project come to fruition.
And I'm going to say, Mr Mayor, I'm a bit snicker when I'm receiving the same email with a different name on it. It's almost like it's been orchestrated with a draft, please use this draft summary template. I find it really disturbing when it's the same words being used, mouthed by different people.
It's not so...
And I responded to every person who's contacted me and responded both verbally and also in writing. I've read every piece of information I can, I've done a lot of homework in the last couple of weeks. And my understanding has been one startup meeting held on the 23rd of August 2018. There's no record of who attended the meeting. And then there's been one-on-one meetings with a number of key stakeholders that are listed there. I'm like councillor, I've also done a lot of ringing round and talking to people. Nobody seems to know anything about it. I'm talking community-based. Where was there a community consultation or information going out other than three articles in the Western Star?
Well, as I said, for the last 12 years, there's been broad engagement through the development of a master plan for the Big Rig and this is one stage of that master plan. It was council reprice in the 2008 to 2012 term that started this rolling. And so there has been extensive consultation over nearly 12 years on this particular project. And in the last term, we initiated the Big Rig Action Group. And that was a council-initiated group, it's not a community-initiated group. There were representatives of Commerce Roma, representatives of Visit Roma on that group. So there has been engagement, continual engagement with the key stakeholders in relation to any tourism initiatives that council was willing to undertake in this particular, you know, in this particular asset.
Just, sorry, just to be devil's advocate here, like, the public perception, like I say, I see the good for it and I also see the negatives, but at this point in time, and because Roma as such has got a lot, this is a perception, got a lot of money, you know, whether, and like it's been justified money, like the sand yards, but a lot of money's been thrown into Roma itself and a lot of other areas are probably going to think, you know, and then the taxpayers are going to fork out potentially another lot of money. This is a perception, I'm still going to say it's my opinion. And another thing for Roma, like, and this is what people need to get out and get that information out there so they know the facts, so they can be, you know, aware of it because all they see is another lot of money. Say, a lot of it, you've answered my questions the other day on the sand yards, I didn't realise where all that money come from. And I'm glad I know now, but a lot of people don't know that, you know what I mean? So I agree, I think all the community should be aware of it at least because it's an investment for them.
We're going to borrow a lot of money.
I think it's...
We'll be up there because I think if you tell the community what we had to borrow, I know what went through with the sand yards, so they knew what we were going to borrow.
Let's see, in certain emails we're getting contradicting themselves. One, they're having a go, they're not doing anything. And the next, they'll have a go at rushing into things, like, you're not going to get a win with them. But for our own peace of mind, if we've got all the information, it's going to be a lot better to make that judgement.
Counselor...
Counselor Hancock, I just was talking to you earlier before, I mean, you sort of asked me about other things, I'm not. But I'm sort of coming back to you and saying, well, it's a little...
But I'm, I'm sort of coming back to you and saying, is it a lay down, is it a, is it?
I think.
Is it a lay down, is it a? Have you made a decision to go with it already? I mean, are you happy that you've got all the facts? Are you completely utterly happy that you know about the whole project, that you know?
Yeah.
You're absolutely one hundred percent sure.
Uh.
You know what I mean, uh, like, you're asking me about facts, all I'm trying to do is get the facts together to make a decision, one way or another. Me as a person, I need another week, probably two weeks, I probably need a month to go through these things, we're all different. You know, the way we consume information. I'm just saying, you know, some, some, someone can make a decision like that, but I can't, right, so I need two weeks at least, probably a week, I don't know. There's a lot of information now, I probably need to go and talk to Charlie Hughes again, probably need to go and talk to someone else, get briefings, right, you know, I need information, I need facts.
Councillor. So. I'm just gonna say, Mr Mayor, with your respect, councillor Hancock probably knows more about the project due to the. Background of working for council prior to the election, you know, but what's been trumped about the last, as a councillor, twelve years in the council.
Well, Ellen, Tom.
Yeah, Ellen, yeah, yeah.
But, but Mr Mayor, in, in fairness to councillor Hancock, uh, the question that you posed to councillor was, was. Um, if you need more information, what is it so that the staff can go and get that information provided to you?
I'll make that decision, councillor O'Neill, and then I'll get my, I'll get the facts that I need to make the decision, I don't have to tell everyone either. I just say it before I make a decision, generally, I'm gonna get all the facts together.
And I just, can I interrupt, uh, Mr Mayor, and just say, I likewise, and I did send out a request through the appropriate channels. Because everything that I read had a different, I was doing my homework, but I couldn't actually get a piece of paper right down, this is what it's gonna cost. Because I'd looked at all the, the information we'd been given, and I just kept going and saying, I'm really not sure how much money we need to borrow. I'm not sure how much has been committed, I read the submission, so I actually requested through the council. The final, and I received that a couple of days ago, which is very, very.
And I printed that out and read it, and I'm trying to work out what the timeline is, I'm trying to work out how that fell within the whole thing, I'm trying to look at figures. And this figure's four point six billion, that figure's three point seven million, you know, I mean. It becomes a bit of a confusing issue at times, and, uh, I just wanted to sit down with someone and go through it, we just say, show me. When.
Attention, attention, testing of the power system, please disregard the sound of the tones, this is a test, test only.
Okay. Just like, oh, sorry, councillor, uh, Mayor Gold, so, so if we all sat down together, you could tell me exactly. Exactly how this whole thing, uh, from a chronological point of view, how it all fell into place. Um, how we arrived at decisions, what happened throughout, uh, all the information I've got, for example, all the, all the printouts. How that falls into place in a, in a timeline, and how, and how, and all that. All the different figures, for example, and do we have to, um, adhere strictly to the actual project? I mean, can you do part of it? I mean, I'm talking about the debt, so if we give in the ball, we give those with the debt, we've got to pay it back. Um, you know, uh, if we're not happy with that, can we sort of, uh, tweak it, can we do something with the plan so that we don't? You know, so we can, you know, um, and I think that's what we are leading to here, is to reduce the overall cost of the project. So, so, you know, we just don't know these things, let's, let's have a look at this and say, um, is it really what we want? And that goes back to what councillor Taylor said, is it really what the people, um, we can't just be pushed into doing something.
It's got to be viable, you know, like borrowing four million, you've got to pay the principal interest off as well. And to pay, pay to cover the interest, there's still another four million dollar debt there. So, you know, we haven't been given all that information.
Well, I'm sorry, sorry, there is a thing, then, where a church, you know, ping and I also says interest on it. But the biggest on interest on it, and the biggest on ping and I, I mean, huge, huge difference, huge difference. Okay, can I just say something, I, I think it's also beneficial if we maybe could organise a briefing. Because just going back to the last council, when we're looking at this project. Uh, I think we had the deputy director come in and explain the project, so that hasn't happened with the new council, so I think. Well, I appreciate that, so. Briefing would be good, uh, whereas the older councillors would have seen that. Um, maybe that may allow, allow some of the, um, questions, um, what do you think, see? Yeah, yeah, okay, so, well, I go, we need to wrap. Yeah.
Mr Mayor, I just feel in fairness, councillor would ask me a question and everyone else answers, so.
Yeah, please, please, go ahead.
Um, councillor Edwards, I, I would never suggest that any of us make any decisions about full information. So my question to you wasn't actually, um, I do apologise if you think that I was attacking you personally, it actually wasn't that, I've just been hearing. That we need more information around the room, I'm actually genuinely saying. What information, more information do we need to be able to understand for projects? Mr Mayor has just said, let's have a briefing from our staff, a hundred percent agree, our staff's been involved in this project from the beginning. So I do apologise if I was attacking, it wasn't, I was actually, sometimes we can say about getting more information, I'm just, I'm just saying, can we be a bit specific with that information? So that we can get the answers we desire.
Well, councillor Hancock, I pay one of this, I pay one of this council, I said one thing, that is, when we make a decision. We've got to have everything in, in front of us, that's, that's where I'm coming from, essentially everything we need.
Councillors, just a reminder also that at any point in time, um, you're welcome under section one seventy eight of Local Government Act. To, and I appreciate that quite often in a council meeting, it's difficult to think of questions upon the spot. Um, for any councillors, we will continue it, uh, so you have that opportunity to, and I've provided the details for that. Some councillors are using that facility, um, to, to ask the questions and articulate. The information that you need to be able to make an informed decision, so please, the councillors, I do encourage you to take use, to make use of that facility. Um, after you've led the meeting today, if there is something that you particularly are interested in. Um, and then if it does relate to the whole council's decision-making, it might help that process. Please do make use of that facility, and then we can, uh, give you that information as, as councillor Gudry will attest to. Their response time was very difficult on a particular matter. Um, that, um, we, we do our best, if we are working to particular timelines, uh, to, to meet those timelines for you. So, so, yeah, post-meeting and in between when we're getting the other information, more than happy to answer the question.
Um, so, um, Mr Mayor, um, CEO, uh, there's probably things that you can't put in at once, then. Because it's too long, you know, it's just, you're gonna need to sit down, talk to someone about, have a briefing. So we call, ask questions and get answers rather than putting it in a, putting it in a letter or a form, it just doesn't work sometimes.
No, no, it, it, it's always making sure of the two, and as the mayor and councillor McMahon, and as Sir, we may all attest to. We, we had workshops which were essentially briefings in the previous term, which was an opportunity for. To, for all of the officers who lived and breathed, those, um, items to come and talk personally with councillors. And get the nuts and bolts of things, so there, there are a couple of avenues where new and continuing councillors can get information. In whatever form you feel comfortable in doing that, whether it's through a briefing. Um, and as, as officers, we would relish the opportunity, um, to have those briefings with you. Uh, because we can give you the, the necessary background as, as well as answering your questions.
I don't think it's pretty, uh, clear, you know, I don't think that, um, not have everyone involved, but sometimes you're better off just sitting down with somebody yourself. Working out by yourself, because you're the one who's got the specific questions, that's, that's technically what I need, I would say. Um, the other councillors, you know, you know, it's all likely to be involved in it, but, but I've got certain questions that I need to talk to. And, and the other thing too is, uh, um, CEO, is that, uh, you know, sometimes, you know, you have questions, uh, you know. Just having a clue what the questions are, be able to, uh, you know, to pose the questions to get the answers. So, so that's where the other, so it becomes a very, very difficult task at times.
Yeah, the, and, and we are very mindful of that, um, it is collectively the council.
I know.
Uh, that makes that decision, so it's really, really important. That everyone who's making that deci- decision does have the same information. And quite often our experience with those informal briefings is that one councillor will ask one question. And it'll actually trigger something in another person's mind that they might not have.
I'm not talking about accessing information in, through the council, I'm talking about getting information outside, like, for example, sitting down, having a talk with, um, Visit Roma or Commerce Roma. Some of my friends say, they, they go through this thing with, with us in detail. Uh, we've had two briefings, councillor O'Neill, um, was quite right there, you know, we had the briefing before, which was a very nice thing to get. But, you know, we're on council now, we need more, so, I'm just saying, you know, uh, so they're the sort of people I'm talking about. The people who, who are outside, who are trying to get this thing through, we need them to sit down with us, again, talk to us, right, I'm talking about us. But if I'm, if I've got the time in the afternoon to go and see someone, I'll go and see them and get them to answer my questions, it might be an internal thing. So now I'm pissing out, I think there might be a section, so.
Yeah, and, and there are, the mayor would clarify that there are deputational opportunities as well.
Yeah, so anyway, that's, that's, that's where I'm coming from. I think we've had a bit of debate on that, um, and, uh, right, okay, we'll, we'll go to the vote. Uh, all those in favour, in favour of the decision in for amendment, all those in favour. All those against, carried separately by the division. Okay, here we go. Okay, we might, uh, adjourn the meeting, um, so everyone can have a break before we have another. Training, and then we'll be back into the meeting. Okay, thank you. The, the meeting. Okay, uh, item six point one, budget deadline extension. Well, I'm, I'm happy to move that council, we're being worthy, uh, request an extension. Uh, well, actually, write to the minister for local government, uh, requesting an extension. Uh, to the budget, budget dead- deadline for the twenty twenty one budget, uh. For the reasons outlined, which would be COVID nineteen, and also, uh. Okay, uh, allow, yeah, actually, I'll probably, I'll start again. Uh, I'll propose that, uh, that, uh, we write to the minister for local government. And request an extension of sixty days to the twenty twenty one budget deadline. Because of COVID nineteen effects and to allow extra budget consultation with the community. Check. Yeah, okay, so, yeah, so I'm, I'm happy to actually say that we write, not, not propose. So we actually write to the minister for local government and request an extension for sixty days, that's what I said. To the budget, uh, deadline, uh, because of COVID nineteen effects, and to allow extra budget consultation with the community. Um, do we have a second for that motion? Second, uh, councillor Burkitt, um, uh, would anyone like to speak to the motion? I might as well start, uh, this is about, obviously, the major disruption that. Certainly have never seen in my lifetime about, um, not being out in the community and mixing and so forth, and. It sounds like Queensland's done really well, and we're, uh, moving out of that, uh, phase slowly in a, in a staged manner. But, uh, two things that I, I'll deal is, uh, that, um. We get the budget as, uh, the best budget that we can have, and also that we have community consultation. And I would like to see, uh, that the things that are raised as part of budget deliberations. Are tested, and I would, you know, like to see that done in new, new, uh, mediums. Uh, where, uh, people use them every day in their life and social media. So this is about asking for extra time, this does not mean that the budget will be held, um, handed down on the thirtieth of September. It means that council has the opportunity, if it's granted by the minister, to actually. Uh, to actually have that as the latest possible date, so. You know, my plan would be, hopefully, uh, as close to the normal date as possible, be able to hand down the budget. As a council, um, but this is an opportunity to have more time rather than, um, maybe not be what it possibly could be. Okay, would anyone else like to speak against the motion? Uh, does anyone like to speak about the motion before the council? Okay, well then, we'll go to the vote, all those in favour, nine zero. Item six point two, Surat, all water allocation. Uh, yes, uh, councillor McMahon.
Now, Mr Mayor, I'll move that council one made application to the Department of Natural Resources, Mines and Energy. For an allocation of eighty megalitres per annum of water from the state reserve. Two, should that, that application be unsuccessful, approve the transfer of eighty megalitres per annum from the Roma bore licence. Six two one three one zero to the new bore in Surat. Three, authorize the chief executive officer or delegate to sign all documents to give effect to council's resolution. And to enable the project to proceed.
Do we have a second now, uh, councillor Hancock, any opposition to the motion? Does the move wish to speak to the motion?
No, thanks, Mr Mayor.
Okay, would anyone else like to speak? Sure, okay, well, we might just ask the officers, anyone would like to make comment?
Probably, it's Graham, it's a Graham report there, you know, it's there, um, Graham's coming from it, it's the quickest. Um, so the quickest way to address the licence is to try and transfer an allocation, um, we do have a tight timeframe, Graham. Graham's speaking himself, but he's here, certainly want to get that licence sorted before he drilled the walls, um. And we have a discussion, there's probably is another option that's welcome to Graham, do you have a fine image report there? Can you provide for a, a, uh, a new application, um, and ask it to be taken from the state's own allocation? That's what we did at, at Quodson, um, so we maybe can be, we did put a bore down at Quodson. Connected that community into that new bore there two years ago, uh. And, and, and they tried to take that from the Roma allocation at that point in time. Uh, we pushed on and made that, that whole new application for that one, uh, and it was successful, um. Yeah, so going, this way of actually going ahead and actually applying for new application will then. Take that risk, will be the small risk of actually going ahead with the, the drilling, drilling the walls, um. You know, it could be our chance to increase the.
I'm delighted you'd like that.
Certainly, Mr Mayor, um, we did get a consultant to produce a report for us, and it is very important to allocate extra rate. And that's why they have a, they have a reasonable amount to us, because you asked for more. Uh, so, uh, when you go through, uh, a full application, you, you go through the process of, um, consultation, adding a few objections as well, so. These are far more risky away than what we're doing, but, um, there's a chance that we could get an allocation there as well.
Okay, um, and, uh, what sort of timeframe is it with note, uh, with the application? Did any roadblocks?
One, three, submit the application, they, uh, bet it, and then I think we have to have a two months consultation. So we're only going about two or two months' time.
Okay, uh, yeah, right, okay, do we have any other questions, or, uh, well, we'll start with councillor.
Three, Mr Mayor, just gonna ask. The officers, what the projected time to drill the well, like, the actual drilling of the wells, of the walls?
Uh, projected time was asked by councillor McMahon, projected time when we'd be planning on drilling the walls.
And, Mr Mayor, the, um. We just want to go out with our letter of consultation to the committee to tell them what we're doing. Um, which we were happy to bring to the next council any approval, and once that's done, then we will go out of tender, and, um. Probably in about three weeks start with Rena, three or four weeks start with Rena, report to council with a tender award. And normally it takes about ten weeks for them to get the technical, so we could be drilling in within about three months' time. And normally it takes about ten weeks for them to get their technicals, so we could be drilling in within about three months' time.
So we did have a couple of locations selected, councillors pulled out the tools, but obviously it's come out through you, like the others, for me, I remember last time where they probably had a alternative site that they wanted to consider. And then obviously through the reporting, I've managed to be having as well and they want to be consulted as well. So that's, that's the reason we did the consultation, just on the location. We do have to refer to sites.
Okay, so councillor Hancock was next, so.
Councillor McMullin asked my question, so I was just wanting to make sure that we weren't, by making, by agreeing to this resolution that we're not going to run out of time to be able to actually drill the boars. I've answered that and just with community consultation, so we will be definitely going out to the communities and.
And actually, so we can work around that draft, both the documents and the community consultation. So that's not Kelly at the moment, it's probably down to council for the approval, setting the dates before we sit down.
And the, it'll be all the community as well, not just the groups, not just the groups.
Yeah, it's all residents councillors, so as I said, so you have corporate consent, you've done a lovely job driving all up, Graham. It's just in terms of the accurate dates, it's to council for the consultation. So that's all that, yeah.
Councillor Burket, is it just, sorry, three years, Mayor, just one more to.
One in Yulbar, I think.
One, yeah. Just the councillors, this was the money that the federal government gave to us with drought, the money. So I think it was a million dollars, is that correct? And we decided, actually both lots of money, we've decided to use the boars in our communities. And so, yeah, so obviously improving Yulbar supply and also backup supply for Surat because if the river water has a problem, we don't have any supply for the town. So it's, yeah, I think very good planning on this. Can I just ask one question? With community consultation, if they don't like the two sites that maybe council put forward, can the community put their own site forward?
That's the whole point of consultations, we're all accepting that we've selected it, we are going after the community, any other alternative sites. I think that is good evidence.
And another question I had is, when is the federal government funding having been spent on?
End of December.
End of December. Okay, so we've got a little bit of time then.
Yes, sorry, Mr Mayor, oh, sorry, talk. Yeah, just when, so this is a standby one, does it still operate on so many hours per week or month to keep? Or is it just on standby, that's all under used, then emergency time?
Sorry, are you talking about Yulbar or?
The Surat, the New Boar there.
The, the bore for Surat is a backup, so it's an emergency supply in case the river fails. So if the river's too low for us to pour water or there's contamination, we can use that and we can provide an upper water for the year from the bore. So we would not use it very often at all, it's more as an emergency backup than a standby then just operating down there.
Yes.
Just so that, with the councillors there, you know, the water getting quite low. We've been getting low the way you're all there and bringing restrictions there, we've also had a couple of times there with it up the spiral as well. So this is Surat, it is that backup. I think the community can, like, the river works, I think that people have improved it more.
Not good on you. Okay. Sure, close.
Councillor McMullin, just, can I clarify? In your motion, you said the first bit was to apply for one thing and then if that fails to the other. I just heard that there's a two-month process. Is your intention that that would be sequential, so put one application first? And Graham will be able to provide advice here, or could we have those two applications running in parallel?
No, you can have one at a time.
Through you, Mr Mayor, I appreciate the, you know, the help with the resolution and I thought it went through my mind, I was going to ask, and it's a good question. In my opinion, dot point two is there for, it's there, but I was gonna suggest we don't mention that to the department because we don't want them using that for escape. What do you think, like, just say, oh, no, we'll give you another one, you take it off your own one. Yeah, I believe we should just go for the new or the one from the state reserves.
Yeah, I wouldn't say the original status as it is, I just said, direction for us to make that original application. And while that was successful, I'd just say, coming back to council, the whole new report to go with plan B, so.
Could I make a suggestion though? Because that, that whole motion is not the matter of public record. So I feel uncomfortable with communicating part of a council decision to government department. So if the mover and second, I would prefer to amend that. I think we have time to have a special meeting if we find ourselves in that position. But that also.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, CEO. So councillor McMullin, if, if you're left off that last point, last dot point.
Point two needs to be removed.
Yeah, just, and then come back if we hear, if we hear that there is a problem, so.
Yeah, I can understand.
It's up to you.
I can understand with the officers, yeah, and I can understand the CEO.
I just, you know, I think it's important that, can I just take advice from?
Yeah. It's obviously, these are the ones that we do, send the correspondence, well, that you can do, just give the application. It is made public record, they've actually been looking for it. Certainly, the form we fill out and reply for that, we will be, I'm gonna say, we will play that B. As the CEO said, it is a matter of public record, it's all on there. It just says, ask me back again, if that was unsuccessful, then come back to council and ask permission to try and then re-apply. But as the CEO said, you probably do a special meeting anyway, might as well set the fortnight. And the risk is that they say no at first and then they, we put the application in a second. We've got, well, Yulbar's going, Surat quite specifically, that doesn't mean you can't turn the tap on until you've been approved. But as we said, that is our backup, sort of same line. And pretty short, we ran it, we wanted to have that, you know, and that's not, do something.
Yeah, that's what I, I just, after CEO raises, I'm gonna suggest we remove dot point two because the bore, as Rob said earlier, the bore can be drilled without the water licenses. And you just, if it's not approved, you just can't use it. So it's not gonna hold the funding up or anything like that.
Well, can we separate, can we separate into resolutions?
But, yeah.
No, that's what they're saying, they don't want to have.
Through you, Mr Mayor, the CEO's, no, I can see what the CEO's saying. We don't want a resolution on the books saying if we would have, if the application is unsuccessful, we have a backup fee, that's basically my opinion.
Well, the issue for today is, as Director Rob said, is that we just need authority to sign this form and clarity about what is going to be on that form. So my understanding is, the feeling at the moment is that it's for the first part of your resolution, authorise me to sign it on that basis and then if it's unsuccessful, then we.
If we go for a re-application, you wouldn't sign that form for us. That form is saying we're gonna go here with that licence that they're granting us. So you, you go there then, you tell them we're rejecting that licence, we're starting from scratch. So you don't need to sign the form for Yulbar.
Through you, Mr Mayor, I'm getting a bit confused. We're talking about Surat there, aren't we?
We've got one for Surat, one for Yulbar, we talked about Surat at the meeting.
This, yeah, this is Surat. So you're saying there's no form going in as yet, you're not gonna do it.
Now, what we did was we applied for a licence for Surat and Yulbar and they sent us a form and you had to sign the form to say that you don't go ahead with the works. And then it's subject to the licence they've granted you. So what I'm saying is, if you're going ahead with this licence, we need to reject that and then start the application over.
I think the council's asking the licence, the application they're applying for, is it the transfer from?
True, from.
So we'd have to do a new one to use the stuff we're doing.
Yeah, I'll be able to clarify, so most, the one thing about is, is the application form is going to try and transfer that eighty metres to a Roma allocation. It's come to the CEO for, to sign off on, and said, well, I think we've got authority for this, we need to press the council, cancel the report. In my discussion with Graham, I know there's the other option, and I would prefer to go that way. They say no, they say no, at least we haven't been able to go with it. Graham's a lot of times counsel where, you know, can hold credit a bit. So that's, that's what we're saying, so the application forms there, CEO might sign it, probably gets the press from the council and at that point, we'll probably go different ways. The application.
So Mike's saying that the applica, you've already applied to take eighty metres from Roma?
Well, the CEO signed it yet.
No, but I mean, the applica, you, who's filled the application form out on that, like, the department or council?
Council applied for that.
Well, if I'm saying, the council's on it.
We, we applied for it, they granted it, it's subject to us, I'm saying we would pay.
So the paperwork has to be changed if we wanna go for new licence.
Why would we apply for that without council, you've come to council for permission?
Performance in my office, councillor.
No, really, but what I'm saying is, why have we?
I haven't.
But why have the council applied for removal of eighty metres without bringing that to?
Not even so, pretty, because they've got that consultant, a little bit of counsel there. They're saying you're not gonna get the allocation, they're talking to the department, they reckon if you go this way, and hence the application. But I still think, just because it's what I'm liking anyway, I think you should put application and make him say no, if that's the case. Because they're talking about what's left and they're, the state, I can come back, we did at Hudson, the state accepted their own allocation, then we're asking to draw out their own allocation for them.
So I'm happy to take some advice and to, anyone to reject that, reject that revolution.
Well, just to be clear, we haven't applied through them as yet, have we?
Yes, no, that's, we have.
We have actually put in an application.
For that original. How you may.
What I've obviously, yes, if it's successful, I'll just probably drop off that item two. Just settle with the first one, if it's unsuccessful, as the CEO said, I'll just bring it up and report back to council.
That's what I, yeah, I'm, that's what.
And we can call a special meeting at short notice, maybe, it's probably just cleaner.
No, that's, I'm happy with that.
Could, could you read that?
Yeah, just clarifying that first one again.
You want me to read it out, sorry? Make application to the Department of Natural Resources, Mines and Energy for an allocation of eighty megalitres per annum of water from the state reserve. And then the next one's authorize the chief executive officer.
Does it say for Surat, what name? That motion.
Yeah, in Surat.
No, the first one.
Oh, the councillor McMullin.
Yeah, you have to put Surat on that one, yeah.
For Surat.
For Surat. In Surat, for, whatever.
Okay, so everyone's heard the new motion, and I'm happy with that, just a second then.
Yeah.
Sure.
Obviously, Graham, you're right with that, most abstractly. And they will be informed that I need to sign for that.
So you wouldn't sign that form, you would write back to them and say, we just pulled that application.
Do we need to have anything about that in the motion?
Just applications.
Mr Mayor.
I'm happy.
I think it went, this will override any other matters that.
Mr Mayor, just point out councillor Hancock seconded the motion.
Oh, sorry, sorry, councillor Hancock, you did too. So councillor Hancock, would you be in favour of the change? Okay, so we have a mover and a second in favour of the change. So would anyone like to speak to the motion?
I would, I would just love to say that this is an exciting project for the Surat community and, you know, securing a backup resource for them is a major priority in that community. And so it's a very, very exciting project.
Okay, now councillor McMullin, did you want to?
No.
Okay, would any other councillors like to speak? Okay, well then, we're gonna go to the vote. All those in favour of the motion? Nine zero. Okay, is there any further business? I wonder if there's no further business.
I have a question, I think it's a part of the agenda. Especially on the agenda. It's like a mic and a strong talk.
So in a general meeting, I think we've got the ability to, but not in this meeting.
Okay, that's fine.
So can we add?
But we do have plenty of time up until the beginning of the term, if that's helpful.
So just through the chair, CEO, with the matter that was foreshadowed in relation to those type timeframes, we could resolve to add something else to the agenda today, could we not?
It would probably be clean, councillor, if we closed this meeting.
Right.
And then we.
Held it, such a good special.
At some time later today. Because then we can give a separate notice of what would be included in that meeting.
Yep, yep, good advice, thank you.
And you'll name it by lunchtime.
Yeah, we can find that other email.
Okay, well, on that note, we will close the meeting at twelve twenty seven P M. Thank you for your attendance, councillors.